There you go. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's special meeting and regular workshop on this April 24th, 2023. The council thanks you for being part of your city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during workshops only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Millen.
Here.
Roach.
Roach indicated she was going to join us remotely. Is she online?
Serrano.
Present.
And Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present. All right, with that, with roll call, five of us present, we'll go to the pledge of allegiance. Can you all please join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item four, new business. And we have one item under new business for our special meeting. Item A, ordinance redistricting of council voting districts to include annexed areas since April 2020 and adoption of proposed precincts. And Mr. Ferguson.
Great, just needed to confirm real quick. It sounds like we're in need of an executive session prior to moving forward on this, so I would just request ten minutes under forty-two, thirty, one-ten, one-I. Potential litigation.
All right. Do we need a formal motion to amend the agenda on this item, Mr. Ferguson? All right, staff has requested that city council adjourn to an executive session for, Mr. Ferguson, ten minutes. For ten minutes, can I get a motion from council?
I second the motion.
I'll make the.
Oh, make the motion.
Yes, good.
Oh.
I move to adjourn to executive session, Stan.
All right, it's been moved by council member Serrano. Do I have a second for moving to adjourn to executive session?
Now I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Millen?
Yes.
Roach? Not yet. All right, and Maloney?
Yes.
Great.
All right, with that, we will adjourn to executive session till seven, to seven fourteen.
And I will be abstaining from both the executive session and then subsequently the vote.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? This is council member Roach. Hi, this is council member Roach. Is everybody there?
All right, with seven fifteen fifteen, council member Roach, I think we can hear you. We're back from executive session.
Great, thank you.
All right, great. So with us back from executive session, Mr. Ferguson, do you have some introductory remarks on the item in front of us?
Great, yeah. So this is the third and hopefully final step to complete this odyssey that we've been on for quite some time of redistricting. And I will spare us all a recitation of the history of how we got here, but long and short of it is, at this point, what we're trying to do this evening is wrap the redistricting requirement under twenty-nine A seven-six. This portion isn't actually part of that statute. This is something that we need to do because we've had, quite frankly, we've had some unique set of circumstances. We've had an enormous amount of annexations take place over the last couple of years since the decennial census. So we need to update our map to include those areas. Essentially, those areas were included in our map when we adopted our, our redistricting map back in December. But you'll recall that those areas were hatched because we didn't want the population in those areas based on the advice from our consultants. We wanted to kind of take this in a two-step process, and so this is that second step of the third step process. I know that sounds kind of odd, but at the end of the day, what we're going to do is fix a couple of corrections, a request from the county to tweak some, a couple of errors and with regard to a census block and another little tweak. So we'll, adopting this tonight would enable us to do that as well as get the annexed areas all in one map. They currently exist, but it would clean that process up, and it's essentially a redundancy at this point. But I think it's a good use of our time to put that all in one spot. And then, third, you'll notice on the map that there are precinct numbers, and those are proposed precinct numbers by the county. There's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation here where the county, we passed our map, and we had to do that based on census blocks because that's all that was available at the time. Previously, we had used precincts that no longer were fitting of our change in our map. So we had to go forward, put in the almost twelve hundred census blocks to create the map, as you see there on the screen. And so by using the census blocks, so that's how we were able to codify our map. Now, the county has created precincts that match these new districts, and so they're moving to adopt those, hopefully within this week. And so what we need to do is get our code back to where it was, which is identifying voting districts by precinct instead of by census blocks, which is very cumbersome and very difficult for folks to be able to look at the code and know what their district is. So if you know your precinct, you'll be able to know what your district is just by looking at our code. So that's the goal with this. It's essentially a cleanup ordinance to kind of tie everything together and put a bow on it. And I'd just ask that you move forward and adopt it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I'll ask council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Roach, any questions or comments?
None here, thank you.
All right, with that, can I get a motion?
Mayor Protem Maloney, I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-six-five, adopting the redistricting map to include annexed areas since April 2020 and amending chapter one point fifteen of the Pasco municipal code entitled Voting Districts to Reference Proposed Precincts by Franklin County and further authorized publication by summary only.
All right, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, moved by council member Campos, seconded by council member Millen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? And I will note that council member Serrano has abstained from this vote. All right, with that, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to the workshop meeting, and I'll ask one of my fellow council members to go grab council member Serrano, if you don't mind. All right, with that, we'll move over to our council city, our city council workshop meeting. And with housekeeping already in order, we'll move directly to item four, verbal reports from council members. Do any of my council members, fellow council members have reports? Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. I attended the Washington State Good Roads Association meeting. It's last week. It, very informative meetings, in fact, so much so I don't always remember everything we talked about. A lot of what's covered is certain municipalities, ongoing road projects. What I can summarize is there is a lot of infrastructure going on, especially regionally. If you look at Highway 12, there's a lot of work going on on Highway 12, and that project seems to be going fairly well. I was able to share some of our challenges on Lewis Street Overpass, but our anticipated due date, I believe from updated in city manager Lincoln and Public Works Director Worley, is we had an anticipated date in August sometime for that to be good to go, so I was able to share that with the Good Roads Association, and everyone was excited to hear the news. So that's basically it. We had a really good presentation from Washington State Patrol on some of the emphasis they're putting on. A lot of it has to do with distracted driving and seatbelt enforcement.
Great, thank you, council member Campos, and I'll note that with the capital budget and transportation budgets that were just passed by the state, I believe there'll be more work going on in Highway 12, so exciting news for safety in that corridor. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. I did attend the Pasco Advisory Council. Mike Gonzalez is bringing that up again, and so even though it was a small meeting, I thought it was good as far as we talked about guidelines and how we want to move forward with his role with the county, but had some good discussions. I thought it was a very good meeting, and then also, this last week, I did have a skilled and technical advisory meeting at Pasco High, and I got to tour the different facilities, the auto shop and the metal shop. And it's always a good thing when teachers are very active in our community and talk about the different programs they have and all the different ways that they help students, so it's good that I was able to represent the city on that board, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other council members' reports? Councilmember Roach, I know you've been laid low, so I want to give you the opportunity anyways.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, but I've been just fully recovering from surgery, so I have not done much at all besides keep my leg elevated.
All right, I think I can speak for us all when we're saying wishing you well on your recovery and glad you can join us tonight. Just briefly, I have two items that I'd like to report on. One is I went to the Pasco Public Facility District meeting on Thursday. The board voted to approve a resolution authorizing their director to negotiate an LOI with Adam's property, so looking in the Broadmoor area, so it seems like they've chosen a site, and now they're working through the process of figuring out, you know, what's that going to cost, what other amenities. There's a lot of discussion about co-locating with other community facilities, including transit and others, so we will see more from, as that moves forward. Again, not a binding contract or purchase agreement, but in a letter of intent. Immediately after that meeting, I went to the downtown Pasco Development Authority's board meeting. So it sounds like Cinco de Mayo is progressing well. They had a very clear, clearly articulated budget, both revenues, expected revenues and expenses, so, you know, speak well to that. I think in general, some of the things that we're seeing, that I know I'm looking for, and I think my fellow council members are looking for out of the DPA, is a continued increase in professionalism, and I think we are seeing that in spades in their work there. So I think there's more to be said on that later on this agenda, but I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, the meeting from my perspective, sitting there, very, very well done, and things are progressing very, very far in terms of their, you know, ability to function like a quasi-municipal organization. And I'll give a quick shout-out for, the Pasco Taco Crawl started on Friday as well and dominated most of my weekend, and it was amazing to see a lot of people out there eating tacos all weekend long. There was a lot of people hitting up the specialty kitchen, and I'll thank Mr. Jerry Martinez again for giving a tour of some of our VIPs for the Taco Crawl, show off the specialty kitchen. Three vendors at the specialty kitchen for tacos and the Taco Crawl this year. Very exciting. All right, with that, I will move on to item five, items for discussion. So item A, Copa Symphony Concert Update and Sponsorship Request. Ms. Pashon.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to welcome up Jose Anicas to the microphone. And then I also note Gabrielle Portugal, president of Copa, is also here tonight. As I'm sure many of us remember, there was a 2022 Sunset Symphony Concert that was held in downtown. Jose was the event organizer as well as a performer, and tonight is here to actually talk about the 2024 concert because there's a group going to Colima, so they are putting their efforts into that, and I will turn the presentation over to Jose.
Great, thank you for those introductory comments. Mr. Anicas.
Thank you, and thank you again, council, for having me. Really appreciate it. Wanted to give it to Gabrielle because he had a little presentation to give, council, in regards to the Colima book and the certificate, so yes.
Well, we were hoping that the mayor was present, but Mayor Protem, maybe you can accept this. We have a book where it records the visit from the Colima folks, and so it's areas in the dry cities that they visited. Plus, we have the copy of the main certificate signed by the governor and our honorable mayor, Blanche Barajas. And so I was hoping that you can take this on her behalf and maybe allow us to take a picture with you.
Absolutely. I know Blanche would love to be here for this. I know this means a lot to her, and so happy to accept it on her behalf for now, and I know she'll be excited when she gets an opportunity, so.
So yes, on the, of course, the update, I know many were there at the event, and thank you very much. I hope the event made you proud, and thanks again to staff for their assistance and just the teamwork that allowed for it all to happen. You know, one of the things I pride myself as the event organizer and, you know, producing events around the state is, is what we do is we really go into areas and ensure that investment stays in these communities. You know, you'll notice, especially with all the artists that were paid, you know, they were all from this area. And that's the beautiful aspect of what I do and what I've been doing over the years and why we just have success, and we really want to use the local talent to put these events, you know, these productions on. So with that, that now looking forward, we are looking to partner with the Columbia Basin College and continue to provide and make this a quality symphony concert by using, of course, local musicians and local artists to produce another Symphony Copa concert where we'll be bringing artists from Colima and using musicians from the Mid-Columbia Symphony as well as the expertise from the Arts and Culture Center, Will Bill McKay at the Columbia Basin College. So, you know, it's one of these things that, you know, hey, we were all successful, and it's awesome to see other professionals in this arena want to join in. And I just think that just shows, you know, hey, you know, I'm, you know, those are the things that make, that feed me, is, you know, you know, those are the things that make, that feed me is, you know, when, when we get more partnerships like that. So with that, the request, of course, it'd be a similar request as we did last time. Ultimately, it goes to funding infrastructure, which mainly is, is we need artists, right? And especially with, you're talking about thirty-eight orchestra musicians, classically trained. You know, we want to make sure that they have a living wage and then get them to be the, the musicians for this next event. So with that, if, if there's any questions, concerns, I'd love to answer, answer them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Anicas. And if I understand correctly, so you're, you're asking for a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship for this event?
Yes.
Just one, one quick item for staff. Is this within our existing budget for items like these?
It, it's not, but there's enough lead time to include this in a budget amendment.
Great, thank you. Alright, questions or comments from Council? Mr. Brown?
Just, thank you, Mayor Protim. Just a quick comment, no questions. This event was more than spectacular. I think you've outdone yourself. Your team was stupendous. I was emotional because I saw unity. I saw everyone come together. Beautiful musical, bring good people together. And I think that event, that evening was, it represented Pasco very, very well. So I think it was a win for Pasco, and it was a win for Colima. So I was very impressed with it. I would do it year after year after year again, unless you guys made a boo-boo. Other than that, I mean, I loved it. I think I saw the faces. I saw the connection within the community. And I saw young people actually enjoying this level of, of, I call it concert music. They were engaged. So I could just only say thank you very much for their job well done.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad you pointed out with the youth, you know, one of the things we pride ourselves on as our arts organization is to make sure that youth are treated like professionals. And so as you notice, we had high school students in, mixed with the professionals. And that is how mentorship works real time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Council? Councilmember Serrano?
Mr. Lincoln, I understand we have the late time. Is there anything that this amount of money would have to displace? Or aside from just minor shuffling?
I, I think this would be minor shuffling, given the amount.
Okay, I assume so, but would like it on the record. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roach, any questions or comments for Mr. Anicas?
Nope, just nice to see you, Mr. Anicas.
Hello.
Alright, I'll echo Councilmember Brown's comments. You know, I was able, I was able to, to join for the, for the concert. And you know, one of the things that really stood out to me is I saw people from Richland who I've never seen in Pasco before. And that, that is something that we've been trying to do, and we try to do on a constant basis, is to show people who we really are. And that was one of those nights where we showed who we, not only who we are, but who we can be. And it really, it moved me, it moved many people. And this sort of thing is, should, needs to become common. Pasco should be the center of arts in the, in the dry cities. We are the center of culture. So we need to keep this up and keep, and so I'll, I'll be supporting this in, in the future when, when the time is right. So I'm very excited. Thank you very much for bringing it.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, I think, you know, as you talked about reaching out to others to come and see and be involved. You know, that, that's, I think, if demonstrated with the diverse folks that attended. I think that's when we win, is when we're diverse. And it's, those are the proud moments as a, as a performer myself, and when I see the audience, it, that's when I know I won. So I'm, I'm thankful, and I appreciate your words.
Great, thank you very much. Alright, with no further questions or comments, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
That brings us to item B, Downtown Pasco Development Authority Monthly Report. Director White.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. There's not a lot of introduction needed. Mr. Martinez, of course, will provide us the information right away.
Great, welcome, Mr. Martinez. Please.
Thank you, Director White. Thank you, council members. Good evening. One, what I just want to start with and get out of the way is, I'm sure you've all seen, I have announced that I'll be transitioning out of the organization. And so I just want to plug that me and the board are working on what this means in the short and long term for the organization and continue sustaining our programs. And I've had several conversations with Director White, Assistant City Manager Pashon, and City Manager Lincoln about how we can continue to, to utilize this partnership with the city for downtown and downtown businesses. But the time for goodbyes is not today, because there's still a lot of work to do. Thank you, Mayor Protim Maloney, for talking about the Pasco Taco Crawl. I had an opportunity to ask one of three of our kitchen clients today, how much action he got over the weekend. And he said he received over two hundred and sixty tickets just from Friday to today, which is really exciting. It was Brad Powell who was, who came to speak to you last month. So he's a newer client, and it's really cool for these newer clients to get sort of real time practice in a high demand situation. So one, I think it's great advertising, and two, it's actually great practice for growing and, and younger and newer business owners. So the kitchen's pretty active right now. We have those business owners bringing their sons, daughters, uncles, cousins, wherever, whoever else to come help during this high demand two-week push. So one, the Pasco Taco Crawl has been really exciting to see in downtown and have that uptick in traffic. So that's going on, and that's really, that's, we're really trying to be supportive of that. And we're very thankful that three of our kitchen clients and many of the surrounding downtown businesses are participating in that. Two, Cinco de Mayo is next week. So feels like my whole sort of past two, three weeks has been just focused on that. We're wrapping up some of the final details. We have over fifty vendors participating on the festival day from a variety of crafts, arts, informational booths, and of course, food. The, most of the entertainment is brought to you by our Pasco School District Arts and, Arts and Music Groups. We have a parade which over thirty groups are participating in. We have around like sixty to seventy vehicles. So I was just thinking about how we're gonna, you know, Tetris them all around City Hall, and I think we have a great plan to do that. It's been a really great partnership. I didn't even know where else to, to go from here. We've had the Benton County, the Benton Franklin Sheriff's Posse come out to, to support us in crowd control for the parade. The Pasco PD has been very helpful in ensuring that safety is a top priority and ensuring that we're meeting the safety standards to protect our people. But also just, you know, ensure that everything's going great, and it's a family fun event. Where else to go? Yeah, we're having the, the, the city, multiple city departments have the tons of trucks. We have the Kids Zone provided by Knockerball, boxing provided by a local nonprofit group. And yeah, I'm hoping that it'll be a fun Friday and Saturday in downtown Pasco. And we're also followed by a separate group participating in a Sunday celebration. And then, so two weekends back to back in May, we're gonna have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, another group. And then Saturday and Sunday, the Latin Business Association will be hosting a Mother's Day celebration that weekend, the same weekend as the Pasco Farmers Market kickoff. So May is just a whole bunch of events, and I'm really honored and excited to be able to say we're celebrating two back-to-back weekends in May with an organization that historically we don't really get along with. But I'm hoping this is the start of something new, and I'm hoping our community really feels the unity and the fun and excitement for having two weekends back to back. Pasco Farmers Market is starting up May thirteenth. We have around thirty-six applicant, or thirty-six vendors confirmed and signed up with another twenty to twenty-five that have either inquired about the application, are working on their application, or have stated that they have, they are interested in participating. So the Farmers Market is off to a great start. We're gonna have the Department of Health here for the first three, four weeks, helping vendors transition into that new Washington Department of Health SNAP program. Our specialty kitchen, we have had our first mandatory meeting of the year this past month, where we spoke about our transition to billing. We're using a better billing software that gives the clients, each of them transparency, autonomy to really know and, and bill their own hours and have better ownership of the kitchen because it is their kitchen at the end of the day, and that's how we really want to treat it. Yeah, is, if, I don't know if there's anything else I could say, that's, that's kind of what we're at right now.
Alright, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. You know, I, I know we're all gonna be sad to see you go. But I think when we, when we discussed this funding agreement at the beginning of the year, a big focus was organizational health and stability. And the organization has to be bigger than one person, and you've taken, you've, you've helped lead a lot of strides to make it that way. Very much appreciate that. Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Councilmember Serrano?
Mr. Martinez, thanks. And like I said, I, you know, we talked in the hall. I, I know you're, you've got a positive trajectory. I'm looking forward to see what you bring. As you bring your parting message, so maybe not tonight, can you prepare how you believe the new funding agreement gave maybe a shot in the arm or was beneficial to the organization? Again, I, I don't want to put you on the spot and call you out on that tonight. But let's just discuss how that was beneficial to the success of the organization. And, you know, as, as you part, you know, the remnants of that funding agreement, if there's any already predispositioned spending of it or anything of that nature, if not, what the remnant is. And, and, you know, we'll see what the new director brings. But again, I know you're gonna do awesome things. I've really enjoyed your energy, and I just wish you the best, man.
Thank you. And I'll say again, I still got a lot of work to do. Alright, I got another report to y'all next month, so. Say please, let's save our goodbyes, because if not, I'm gonna start to your number.
Alright, good. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. For me, Tim, I want to echo a great majority of what Pete mentioned. But I want to add that it's just a comment. You know, this is my time of the month where I'm always excited to see you come and deliver. And I'm gonna stay excited because I think you guys done an excellent job. You stepped up to the plate. An exit interview would be awesome. This is down the line where we're going. I would like to see a really full report that's gonna just project us into greatness. And I think you've stamped it well enough that we can move forward and feel secure in doing that. So right where Pete was on that exit interview, however you want to do it, just give us something great. And, and we can just be superstars, and you can be proud of the legacy that you set. So I appreciate the hard work. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Mill?
Thank you. Yeah, it just seems like I just kind of started to get to know you, so it's kind of sad here that you're leaving. It's kind of hard when you start to become friends with somebody, and then you are rooting for them, and then all of a sudden they're moving on. But I did have a question. I know like after parade, and sometimes you guys have events like on Cinco de Mayo, and then it seems like everybody like leaves. Is there like, and like what kind of things do you guys have in the evening to get people to, to come back and as far as to celebrate Cinco de Mayo? I know sometimes it's not as advertised, but can you kind of fill me in what you guys have going on?
Yeah, and so are you thinking specifically like after the event, or?
After the parade, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've gone down there just by chance, and one time they had like horses, and there was some pretty cool stuff.
Yeah, we're hoping, so, and that's a really good point, because I think last year, I'm just kind of following the same sort of rhythm and flow. The parade happened in the morning, and then right after, like boom, 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 right after, we're starting festivities right here in Peanuts Park. So that's an area that I know had like safety concerns last year as well is, you know, like thousands, hundreds of people were watching the parade. And then we all walked, like I was part of the, that, that crowd. We all just walked in a crowd down the streets to Peanuts Park. So that's an area that we're learning from, and that's an area that we want to make sure we're, we're having some control over just for safety concerns. But I think that was actually pretty successful in making sure, hey, I'm already here for the parade, why don't I go check out what's going down in downtown? So we're hoping that message kind of hits again this year. And I'm hoping that we can kind of just follow up and, and build a routine for our community that parade's happening in the morning, and I know exactly where to go afterwards. There's gonna be entertainment, food, boxing, a bunch of fun stuff, family fun, family-friendly activities in downtown Pasco.
And when, around what type does it wrap up?
It'll wrap up around six PM this year, yeah.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Capos?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Maloney. Mr. Martinez, you'd mentioned before how you were not a event coordinator. And I just want to ask you, you know, I'm not hearing any sort of negative chatter or commotion that I typically heard over the last couple of years about how this event's going. So I'm hoping that it's been fairly easy for you. Has it been as daunting a task as you originally planned or thought? And then vice versa, you know, if it's been kind of seamless, have you incorporated lessons learned from previous years and to try to do better? And have you established some sort of parameter for, again, legacy-wise, to, to make sure that this, this goes? And then another kind of a long one, you know, I think some of the takeaway from previous conversations have been to focus on what success looks like for this event. And I hope that we define success as the economic impact of this event and not so much about what the DPDA is spending. So if you could share a couple of those with me right now, that'd be great. If not, we can always get a further debrief after the event.
Yeah, and I'll just share kind of what comes to my mind at first. So one, there's, there's plenty to learn. Cinco de Mayo, I mean, I'm really honored that I get to give one year of the long decades and, and sort of legacy of Cinco de Mayo. So we have that to kind of pull from, and lots of lessons from last year. One thing I kind of am trying to manage and also help our committee manage is that we're not gonna get it perfect this time. And perfection should never be a goal, but I want us to take three steps, three large steps in the right direction. So when we talk about re-centering the focus around community this year, this, it looks this way. But, you know, maybe next year, we can start talking about how we really drive foot traffic to downtown storefronts. How we really ensure that Pasco is, is, you know, Pasco businesses are really incentivized, especially in the downtown area to participate in the parade. So, you know, this year, we just made it kind of affordable and community-oriented for everyone. But I think we've already started to learn and see, hey, like there's ways we can really incentivize this towards downtown Pasco businesses, towards Pasco businesses, and then everyone else. Because that's kind of how we, we can see it. We, even in the pricing structure for vendors, in the pricing structure for, or prioritization for artists. And then two, I think one thing I took from, a, a good lesson from this last year is I just want this to be a lot more manageable for a realistically very small team of volunteers and paid staff. This idea that we were gonna be throwing huge, you know, show-stopping concerts in downtown just honestly isn't realistic with the amount of volunteers and just small staff we have. So understanding that, I think, you know, we could take a step back and realize we have real assets in downtown. One, the natural existence of culture, history, legacy of Cinco de Mayo is an asset that we need to absolutely always center in Cinco de Mayo. Two, we just have great community connections. I, I mean, any of you, Councilmember Brown and Mayor Protim Maloney, our board meetings, it's, I'm sometimes very surprised and, and like very happy that like a lot of community members actually show up to our board meetings. We have representatives from the Pasco School District, from the Port of Pasco, the Pasco Economic Development Project. We have really strong backers that believe in, in the community event beyond whatever it is for us. Beyond this, hey, cool, fun time. They believe in it for what it does for our community. So I think that's something like, it, it, that's what it's all about. It is, it's, it's actually really hard to throw an event in Pasco like at, at this scale. And I'm, I'm always very shocked of how many years we've done this, but we haven't retained a lot of that information. So I think that's like a DPDA issue, but also this year, we're trying to really standardize the type of information and processes we use with the city. I think I've gotten to like, like if I ever throw an event now, I know exactly who to go to and who to call, which is pretty fun. But I think just, you know, we've talked about that in some of our committee meetings. It's just, you know, how do we sort of socialize this information for everyone to know? How do we bring down the barriers so it's not just, hey, we can throw great events by, if the DPDA is involved? How can our community activate Peanuts Park? How can our community come in and shut a road down for something cool that they want to do? So I don't know, I have a lot of thoughts. I'll probably, we'll probably, you know, continue to share. And I'll also mention Director White invited me to also, you know, give some feedback and, and some, you know, barriers that I, that I had in my time here. And also ideas or things I was just never able to execute to give to the city so we can continue building this up on, on the energy we started.
Great. Councilmember Brown, do you?
Just a quick clarification. This one's, I said I echoed most of what Councilman Serrano said. I actually echo all of it that came out to the left. So if it's on the record, let's clean it up. He's my guy. It's okay. It wasn't meant like that. I just want to clean it up. So we're good. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Councilmember Roach, do you have anything to add?
Just that, you know, what's already been said, but I'll, I'll keep it short, is that I was sad and bummed out to see her, whether, Mr. Martinez, because I think that you hold a lot of promise for DPDA and what we've already seen you able to do, but knowing that you know what's best for yourself. So thank you for what you've already done. I'm looking forward to Cinco de Mayo this year and the focus that you've put more on getting back to, you know, the cultural connection of what is Cinco de Mayo and making it a loyal, excuse me, a local, not loyal, a local event focused on local businesses and local people. Um a local event focused on local businesses and local people. Um and I would also say that I love hearing that feedback from you before your departure or. Um or, you know, at the time of, just kind of feedback for what are some of those ideas? Or those thoughts that you've had about how could improvements be made, and I think they would be invaluable to us. So, I think I pre- kept it pretty succinct, but um you know, the previous. Uh person that was up, Mister Anigas and the, the Copa event, I mean, I think that's one of those sorts of. Amazing magical nights that the downtown, that Peanuts Park gets to host. And you had some collaboration in that, and I was in, in attendance of that as well, and will say that. Not only was it captivating of people from other cities, but of all ages in the crowd that. Um the area was safe, it was clean, it was welcoming, it looked magical. It had what uh Councilmember Milney is always telling us that downtown needs, which is outside street lighting. And it did, it just brightened up the place, and so, um yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna miss having you there. But hopefully you'll leave us in a good way, um with some good tips of how we can go forward, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you Councilmember Roach, um I don't know if there's much more for me to say other than, um what I've already said is that, you know, we see that the, the foundation is strong. And that's what we were asking for, you know, um you know, just, just a few short months ago, was making sure that that foundation was strong, that we could, we could. We can build on, on something with, with the, with it and. And feels very much like that's where it is, and we're seeing the evidence of that from even the comments and reports you're able to give tonight. Um just briefly, I've got your website pulled up, downtownpasco.org. Um and the Cinco de Mayo events, Noto Cultural, um on Friday from six to eight. Um that's May fifth, that's actually on Cinco de Mayo, and with the parade on Saturday, May sixth, from eleven to twelve. And then from twelve to six, um downtown for the rest of the Cinco de Mayo festival, so. For any of the listening audience, please, uh come on down to downtown, again, see what Pasco can do, you know, you'll just, just look at who we are and look who we. And look who we can become, so come, come be a part of us, so I'll give the, the plug for you, if anything you'd like, else you'd like to add, otherwise, uh. Happy to let you back to your evening.
Yeah, just, yeah, thank you for the plug on the website, cause we're keeping that heavily updated, uh stay posted on our social medias at Downtown Pasco for promo videos. Uh footage of last year and all that good stuff, thank you.
Great, thank you so very much. Alright, with that, I think we've got the flavor out of the, out of the way, so let's go with something a little more technical, um. Uh Director Buckley, we have item C, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, biennium financial update, fourth quarter twenty twenty two.
Good evening Mayor Protem Maloney and council members, yes, my presentation is not nearly as exciting usually. But I'll try to make it at least not too boring. Uh this is the financial report for the end of the year, twenty twenty two and the end of the biennium. Um and it covers at a very high level, of course, we don't get into too much detail. Uh building permit results, uh and a summary of revenues and expenses. Um it's all, I'll just dive into building permit results, the activity was strong, and this uh in your packet, you'll find the report that had. I included three years worth of it detailed, just to try to give you a little more uh of a look. And so um the thing that was most interesting, I guess, or very interesting is that the commercial class of business uh permitting increased the most. Uh the count increased by sixteen or an average of sixteen point nine percent. And the permit value increased by an average of sixty four percent and, and uh really jumped between twenty and twenty one. And then still stayed high in twenty twenty two, um but uh overall, um. The count was down when you consider all the permit types, just a tiny bit from twenty one to twenty two, uh just tiny, eight, eight. So it's pretty small, and then, but the permit value was higher by four point four, an average of four point four percent, so. Uh good, good activity, which uh translates to uh in the long run, sales. Or I guess in the intermediate run, sales tax potentially, and then also assessed value going up. Um and I, the one that stood out the most to me was the industrial category with a very high year in twenty twenty one, which I probably doesn't. Surprise anyone on council, knowing all the activity that happened that year, but it was just a very big change, kind of a pyramid, it was. Uh eighty two million, two hundred and seventy six million, then back down to fifty million, so it's kinda interesting. Um and then as for revenues, um it's always important for us to pay attention to and analyze our tax revenues. Uh especially for, well, all funds, but uh that are tax funded, but general fund primarily. Um gets a substantial support um from tax revenues for government services, which include police and fire. As well as um administrative services and parks and recreation, so a lot of things that the city. Uh provides that citizens rely upon, and approximately eighty percent of general fund operations and debt services. Covered by tax revenue that this, the city collects. Um uh in twenty twenty two, our sales tax increased by twenty seven percent. Um and most of that, or not most, I shouldn't say, a good portion of that was related to construction sales tax, and so. Uh that is variable, and we just wanna keep an eye on that, because um we don't really wanna rely too heavily on a variable revenue source. Uh for ongoing fixed costs, so we'll keep paying attention and looking at the data as it. Uh comes in from the state and included in your packet, there was a listing of sales tax by category, so you can look at that and just see the breakdown. Um as far as by fund type, there's a comparison between general fund, or there's activity, general fund. The enterprise funds, which is the utilities, um special revenue funds, which are funds like ambulance and the ARPA fund. And then construction fund, and then finally internal service funds, which are just the funds that. Really at the city rely on, the services uh like equipment replacement and fleet operations. Uh we keep track of uh some healthcare benefit funding in a special revenue fund, so I'll just do a quick. Slide over those funds and the activity and then I'll leave you alone. Um for the general fund, revenues were up nine point three percent for all types, and expenses were up seven point ten percent. So revenues are ahead of expenses, which is uh what is in, we need, um and then uh we're just. Kind of echoing what I said momentarily, you know, a moment ago, is that we're just gonna pay attention that those revenues stay ahead. And that we are looking at fixed costs and, and substant- substantial rev- or sustainable revenues, excuse me. Um as far as utilities or the enterprise funds, the revenues also outpaced expenses. And for the most part, if you're looking at that, and there's some places where revenues are lower than expenses, that's tied to um capital. Uh that just the timing of projects, most of capital is revenue uh comes in as a reimbursement basis, so if the, if they're not. But occurring as fast as they are budget, like budgeted, then it'll slow it down, um or it'd be lower than budget. Uh special revenue funds were, had strong revenues, um and yeah, and then finally, construction funds. Um it, it is the same category or situation as in the utility funds, where there's capital work done there. They get reimbursed at, with uh activity, and so that sometimes makes a difference between the budget and actual receipts. Um and then finally, internal service lens, there's not too much to talk about there, other than we did have a, that miscellaneous category. And that set of funds is high due to a refund. Um all of the fund types were under budget and expenses, and in a couple cases, if you're looking at your packet. Personnel benefits look especially low, and that's just related to um a year-end accounting entry, it's. The actual activity during the year was in line with what we budgeted, but we have to make an accounting entry that. Makes it look different than uh it actually is, um as far as cash basis. Um and then finally, I did put in there this year, a list of significant construction projects where we, uh you know, there, I wanted to give credit. And show all the hard work that's been done on that front, and so there's just a list by type. Um as far as financial outlook, the city ended twenty twenty two in good standing, we had strong revenues and our expenses were not over budget. And then just, there's a list that I included in there too of issues and items that we wanna consider as we move into the new year. Um which I know we're already to April, but as we move into the new biennium, it's maybe better to say. Um uh we want to pay attention to growth and what pays, you know, the cost impact of growth and how that's paid for. We want to pay attention to that balance between reoccurring revenues and recurring, uh paying for reoccurring expenses. And then uh preparing for future expense needs, like uh the end of the safer grant. Or um we have some capital financing that's coming and being prepared to. Uh service that debt as it's issued, and then future renewal replacement needs in the community um for facilities and infrastructure. And so, uh just ask if you had any questions, please provide them, and I'll try to answer.
Right, Director Buckley, thank you for not walking quite through every slide, um I had a moment where I was like, oh no, oh no, I better, better be ready to, to interrupt. And just, just in case, I, I think that, that my big takeaway from that is um our revenues in twenty twenty two grew faster than our expenses. Um which for a very high inflation year is, was a real challenge, and I think that speaks well to this city staff's ability to manage within their budget. And so I'm, I'm gonna take that as a, as a huge win, uh I don't think everyone's budgets fared so well, given inflationary costs. So I'm very interested to see how this all plays out, um and this year, I think we've already seen, I think your, your last report was that we were a little bit slower. Um than, um than we had been for, for last year, um which I guess isn't a huge surprise, but well, just need to be very, very careful and cautious about that.
And that, I did look at the data behind that a little more, and all that dip, the slowness is tied to construction. And just, I think, timing of construction in the prior year, so uh we'll see how that goes as we move forward. But it is related to that one category of tax type.
Great, I appreciate that, and the only other thing I would note is, um gosh, which slide, one of the slides anyways, um we have a, a lot of capital outlays. That um that our actuals are significantly less, is that the next item I'm about to talk to you on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Excellent, cause I was noticing that there's some, a very large sixty plus million dollar differential there, and so. So with that, any other questions or comments for uh um Director Buckley? Councilmember Roach, any questions or comments for Director Buckley?
I don't have, uh have any at this time, thank you.
Alright, great, well, thank you very much, um and we'll move on to the next item, which uh um is the carryover funds for capital projects from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two biennium. Uh Director Buckley.
Thank you again, uh yes, the, the uh sequence of these two items was perfect. Uh we did end twenty twenty two with capital projects that were not completed, uh and both, that affected both our budget as far as. Revenues and expenses, and so there is a uh R C W that allows us to take the remaining budget. Uh that all budget uh that has been previously approved by council, to take that remaining, uh you know, look at what was approved. What was spent, and then the remaining amount come to, back to you and ask for the authority to move the budget into the next biennium. So that we can keep pace with, uh just keep moving on with the projects and, and finish them up, it's uh the state recognizes that. Uh oftentimes capital projects don't fit in one budget season, and so they give us this mechanism to. Request your, your approval and then move that, make a budget amendment.
Alright, great, um any questions for Director Buckley on the capital side of things? Councilmember Roach, any questions on the uh capital projects uh fund carryover?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Alright, great, well, thank you very much, um so we'll, we'll see that on our agenda next week. Excellent, thank you, alright, um that completes item D, so we'll move on to item E. Ordinance amending Pasco municipal code, creating chapter eight point zero seven compost procurement, Mr. Ferguson.
So, but not sure how the legal department ended up with compost procurement, but um I'm gonna pretend that wasn't intentional, but um. The uh, no, long and short of it is, we had a, a little bit of confusion here, uh there's the uh House Bill seventeen ninety nine, uh was passed last year. And there was some confusion about whether it actually was going to apply to the city of Pasco. Uh we, we determined that it does and that we need to get going and get this implemented, um and so essentially what it does is, it's a, um. It's really one of these kind of aspirational uh statutes that the legislature implemented, that really wants, um. Or requires rather, uh the city to uh have a procurement policy for composting materials. And uh has uh certain requirements uh that, that we have to kinda go through and, and make sure that we're doing those, and I'll, I'll briefly just skim over those. So that we're all clear, and then let me know if, if you have further questions, uh with regard to the ordinance, uh we, one of the things that we uh. Were able to do was take some, from some other jurisdictions, that some of the, the language that they've uh been able to use and has been successful and. Helping them really kinda clarify what the goal is, the one thing I would say is that the definition of finished compost product. Um if you'll, you'll notice there, that means a product of compost, uh composting material is defined in seven A, two O five, blah, blah, blah. Uh finished compost material include but are not limited to a hu- one hundred percent finished compost or blends that include compost as primary ingredient. Mulch is considered a finished compost product if it contains a minimum sixty percent composted material, bark is not a finished composted product, so. The, basically what that means is, that's getting into the quality, you can't just, uh we wanna be clear about what we're trying to accomplish with this and not just. You know, throw five percent of composted material in there and say that, uh that's, uh that's meeting the goals, so. Uh that's a, that's a quality control uh kind of mechanism, and I won't even pretend to understand um what all that means, but uh scientifically, but. Um the other portions I did wanna just quickly draw your attention to, well, uh there'll be some uh things that we need to, you'll notice there's, there's several, uh. Um uh there's several words that are uh consistent, uh with regard to the general policy, the city Pasco shall endeavor. To purchase uh finished composted products, uh and it gives a percentage of what we're, uh who, who we need to be uh looking for to, to purchase those materials. Then the second part about local purchasing, uh talks about uh the, the uh idea that we need to be giving local preference. Uh to folks that are doing uh this here, lo- uh doing it locally and that also meet some national standards, so. Uh and then talking about the planning uh portions, uh kind of how we can go forward and meet the policy and um we, we shall plan. Uh to, to do these things, but then uh it uh doesn't, it can't require, because uh obviously case by case basis is gonna really. Um it's, it's, it's gonna be really specific, so uh there's certain things that obviously we can look for with regard to planning, you know, landscaping projects, construction. Uh those types of things, uh road uh uh to help uh with road erosion off the sides of uh the swales of both, of the roads. Those are areas where um uh these materials can be utilized to, to filter groundwater, those types of um things, and then. Of course, then it gets into uh the education and outreach for uh local composting, um and so really what the goal is, and then finally, there's a reporting requirement. But really what the goal is, is to really um force the city to um. Start this process of, of trying to look for ways in which they can use composted material, uh understanding that. Uh compost is a significant contributor to methane and, and uh which is an emission uh greenhouse gas, and so I think that's really kind of one of the goals, is to make sure that. Um we're, we're, have this policy we haven't placed, it's, it's gonna take some, uh it's gonna take some work, and I'll, I'll defer uh to Ms. Buckley. Um uh because this does have a lot to do with purchasing and, and really will um most likely have to do with both purchasing as well as public works, so. Uh those will be the, kind of the two departments that will be mostly affected, but uh in case Ms. Buckley had some other thoughts that she wanted to add about how. Um kinda next steps to, after we adopt an ordinance, then we can start that process of implementing the, the requirements, but I'll turn it over to her.
I'll just add that it'll take some collaboration and, and communication between the departments and some uh guidance. Uh to help everybody be aware and make sure that we can report and, and capture all the data, so we'll be working together to get there.
Great, thank you for the report, uh comments or questions from council, um Councilmember Campos?
Uh thank you, before I get started, I wanna say, I've heard it all before, I know you guys are thinking, this is not my agenda, I didn't bring this up. Um uh anyways, besides that, a couple of questions, um I don't anticipate some of the answers to be had tonight. But something I'm thinking of is, uh Director Worley has mentioned carbon tax credits, would a program like this? If we utilized it at such rate, would we be getting a benefit for potentially? Using some of this carbon in a different way, again, I don't, I don't think anybody has the answer to that, but that's a question that I'd be interested to see. Using some of this carbon in a different way, again, I don't I don't think anybody has the answer to that, but that's a question that I'd be interested to see some follow up on. Another thought I have is. Just from a constituent point of view, I know that people have brought up to council before about. BDI being kind of this monopoly in the area um as far as, you know, Pasco's concerned especially. Um you look at Kennewick and Richland residents who tout having a recycling program, and we in Pasco don't. And so this program maybe makes me think that this could open the door for. An organization like BDI to maybe utilize some of our green waste a little bit differently instead of just. Collecting all my grass clippings and throwing them away, um I'd like to see something like that happen again, I'm not, I don't think that this is. We're not gonna do that here, but just voicing an opinion, I think that would be really cool, um. Vice versa, if that's not the case, um. You know, does. Again, this is a big ask, we're looking at big closed loop systems with our process water reuse. Could we do something similar with what the city and then recapture some of that in terms of buying what we're selling, so to speak? Again, I don't anticipate any of these answers, but. Just listening to this has kind of got me thinking, if we endeavor to do it, could we collect and then? Make our own compost and use it in some of our products, so anyways.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos, um I will note that I saw something in the Herald um a month or two ago. Talking about how I think one of the other cities is doing composting pro- uh program in some way that it was used, that basically their entire supply was purchased up by a private developer. I think it might have been the Amazons, but this is a large industrial commercial project, and that's what they use to to level out the land, so. Um I think there are that's there's some examples that locally that might be doing that, so that's very interesting, any other uh council member comments or questions? Councilmember Roach?
None at this time, thanks.
Alright, thank you, um and uh Mr. Ferguson, I think when I read this and I and I think of what shall means and endeavor and um. Attempt, plan, um.
Strive is my personal thing.
Strive strive is fantastic, um so what I understand is this is this is a requirement in state law that we are complying with, and that's where this came from. Um so this isn't necessarily trying to change our process other than to ensure that we are in compliant with state law and doing what we are supposed to and legally required to do. That's what this does um in front of us here, is that correct?
That's that's correct.
Okay, and it has the uh the appropriate words to um. To to satisfy intention um and the law and the correct ways. Excellent, and that's all the questions and comments I had, alright, um. No other lights on, alright, we'll uh uh we'll expect to see that on the um agenda next week, alright, great. Alright, um with that, that wraps up section five, which will move on to section six, miscellaneous council discussion. Uh City Manager Lincoln, I get I get to say that, City Manager Lincoln, do you have any miscellaneous uh council discussion for us tonight?
I I I do, thank you very much, uh Mayor Protem and Council, um first, there's a couple of photos, I think at the end of the slide deck. Wanted to share from the the visit we had with the uh Peruvian delegation, so we had a member from the the Peruvian consulate's office. And uh three firefighters that that joined us from Peru, uh from Pasco, Peru. It was a really nice visit, um got to exchange gifts with them and uh toured them around, uh they the police station and fire station eighty four. They uh also got to attend a swearing in ceremony at the police station, so it was it was really a. Uh a a fun day to have them and tour them around, and they're looking forward to uh. Um growing the relationship between the cities of Pasco, so we're gonna look forward to continuing conversations with them, but they had a. They had a really good visit and um it was really nice because we had so many uh Spanish speaking uh employees that it was it was a very great, great time, so. Really enjoyed it, um then I'm gonna have uh Zach talk about uh an ACNS item. And I've got a couple others.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mr. Lincoln and uh members of council, so this uh weekend, there is a super pet adoption event through Jenny's Hope at uh Columbia Park in Kennewick. Uh that's Saturday, April twenty ninth from ten to three, Tri-City Animal Shelter, um will be participating in the event along with twenty other. Um over a dozen shelters, um there's food vendors, uh just a great adoption event for all the animals in the community. Um Tri-City Animal Shelter is excited to get out there and and really promote the local shelter, our shelter, as well as uh. Hopefully link up some people to uh some new animals uh for their families, so pretty excited to see that, Saturday, ten to three, Columbia Park.
Thank you, um also wanted to mention that we had a uh a really amazing year when the with the legislative session, particularly in the capital budget. Um we we were able to receive partial funding for uh making improvements to Peanuts North. Uh three million dollars for Geesa Stadium improvements, five million dollars for PWRF improvements. Uh seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improving the soccer complex at uh at Burton. Um a million and a half dollars for more safety improvements to SR twelve, which were mentioned earlier. Uh Sylvester Bike Ped Crossing was funded as well as uh safe routes to schools. For Sandifer Parkway, Road ninety to Argent and Road eighty eight pedestrian crossing. Um couple other items I wanted to briefly mention was that it does look like there's going to be a uh likely special session with the legislature, they were unable to. Find a resolution with um Blake, so they will be going back to the drawing board, it sounds like, on that, more to come. Um also wanted to let everyone know that it looks like uh May eighth will be when we bring forward the uh draft of the cannabis ordinance, so I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the. The timing for that. Uh also wanted to mention briefly that uh from CED that uh they'll be advertising for the block grant application process from May twenty eighth. Through June thirtieth this year, applications will go to Planning Commission, uh July twentieth and August seventeenth, and then the council anticipated for August twenty eighth. And September fifth, I also wanted to mention uh that this is Director White's last council meeting with the. The city prior to his retirement, um his retirement celebration will be in this chambers, uh three P M on Friday. And I personally wanted to thank him for his years of service as a public servant to the city of Pasco and just to the the planning profession in in general, so thank you, Rick. And that's all I have.
Alright, well, I think uh that ro- that deserve deserves a round of applause, I know uh Director White will have an opportunity to celebrate you a little more later, but. So so we'll roast you later, but um. Appreciate your 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 very long and uh dedicated service to the city of Pasco. Alright, uh council members, uh Councilmember Campos.
Yeah, just really quickly, I'm still puzzled, I don't know how Rick's gonna spend his Monday evenings and and every monthly Thursday. Planning Commission, I'm sure, uh I hope, I hope, Rick, you have a hobby. No, again, I can't say enough, thank you, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you, uh my tenure on Planning Commission and again on City Council, um something I wanted to bring up. To the rest of council, um I've had a discussion with City Manager Lincoln about this, you know, we've done a lot of heavy lifting. You know, Rick's department has helped with um you know, our master transportation plan, got the community housing action plan. Something that is listed on our goals that we haven't really touched on, I feel like, is the community engagement plan, we look at identity um. With Cinco de Mayo right around the corner, I think it's a good topic to bring up to the rest of the council that I think we should not forget about. Putting the effort into this, I know staff has been diligently working on uh helping serve our goals. Um and I'm looking forward to hopefully getting some time to workshop this one with you all, um. I I think that is probably it, again, some of the conversations we've had during our mini retreats and our biannual is about. Possibility of IDEC, and I think that if we were to workshop that community engagement plan, I think that could come up, again, I I'm really excited now. I think uh City Manager Lincoln's touched on it in his last update to us, I think that that's the direction he's willing to start working on now that he is. Stepped up into the role he's in, um some of his com- uh conversations. While he hasn't directly come out and said it, sound very similar, that he's he's ready to start working on this and try to. Get a streamlined approach on how we're gonna engage the community, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Campos, uh Councilmember Roach, do you have anything to add in in miscellaneous discussion?
Just didn't get to participate in that standing ovation for Director White, I wanted to uh applaud him, his years of service, um. And I've been with probably Director White longer than any other city staff in terms of just relationally, um. You know, being on Planning Commission, so I am. I'm really happy for you, Rick, and I know that you will find many ways to spend. Your Monday and Thursday nights um without a furrowed brow um. That that will be on your your expression, so um thank you for everything you've done for City of Pasco and um. Happy for you and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Alright, I I have just two two items I wanna that are very related that I wanna bring up, um so part of my weekend, um doing, you know, work for for the uh um. At the Pasco um um Taco Crawl, um I spent about eight to ten hours um in Peanuts Park. Um um once between uh Friday and Saturday, um and I I can say that I've got a lot of concerns with the Blake decision not having been revisited by. By the legislature in a way that that was successful, that that came to some sort of resolution, and I'm deeply concerned about the possibility. That the uh legislature may let lapse any laws relating to possession of uh of uh of these substances, so when we're um. I I know I am hopeful that the legislature will go to um a special session and resolve this uniformly across the state. I. Am disappointed enough the fact that they didn't come to an agreement already, that I would very much be interested in making sure that we are ready. Um now that doesn't mean that I hope I hope we're not drafting our own legislation, I assume that that if we reach that spot, there will be a coalition. Around the state of different cities approaching this same problem in the same way, but I'll be very interested to make sure that we have something ready to go, so that if the the legislature fails us. Again, that we have something that we can put into our books, and so that we have municipal code that allows us to 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 manage the um possession and use of um. Of of um you know, of drugs.
Just so you know, I had a conversation with our prosecutor today about that very thing, so um he's very well aware and and wants to be TDA.
Great, um cause I mean, while I was down there, um you know, some of our officers visited and uh. Um chased away about, I think it was four people, I think they said that were smoking fentanyl. Um we had um a was I I witnessed a suspected um drug sale. Um there was um public urination going on at one point in time, um and the simple fact is that a lot of the help that these folks need. Uh they may not be willing to get on their own, and there does need to be some sort of incentive and tools for us to do so, so um. What that what exactly that looks like, it's not up to me to decide today, um but come July second, if the legislature hasn't acted, uh we will have a role in in doing so, so I'm. I'm I'm I was. It was it was not the best environment to hang out with with my wife and some of our other volunteers for the weekend. Um while I felt very safe because everyone was very friendly, um. It was still just one of those environments that that we need to be able to help clean up some, so I'm. Yeah, it was not it was it was not the best uh situation to be to be hanging out in over the weekend, so. Um but I appreciate the professionalism of the Parks and Rec staff that were there twice, I think I saw them, there are three different times to clean and open up bathrooms, they were there keeping things picked up. Um and swept up and and looking looking nice, um so there's really good Parks and Rec effort. Um the police obviously did come down and were 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 checking things out, but again, uh when someone is actively smoking fentanyl and they're not arrested. Or or trespassed from our public park or anything, that's that's deeply disturbing, um and something that I I just. I wanna understand better how we can how we can resolve this, and I I know I'm not the only one, so anyways, um. Last item on that, I would just wanna say is as um I know we talked about resource navigators and people trying to get some of these folks help. Um and I'd be very much interested in understanding what our our effort is there outside of uniformed police officers to again, get these people some help so they're not. Sitting there in our public park, um you know, laying on our public benches and, you know, smoking drugs that I would certainly not want around our kids. So long term, I would very much like to understand what we're doing here, so. Anyways, I I have plenty more to say about that, but I'll kick back over to Councilmember Campos, got a light on?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem, again, briefly, it kind goes back into what I was saying earlier about wanting to revisit some of our council goals and discussion, um. Should have brought this up earlier, but again, we as a council made it clear that like our number one priority, we all very much care about trying to address the homelessness. And we've done a great job of talking about housing solutions, but I wanna know. What the bigger piece of the pie is, obviously, supporting law enforcement is another uh part of that pie, resources is another part of, but what? What avenues are we potentially not discussing or have not discussed yet that we should be looking at, and I'd like to. Spend more time trying to address those needs, cause again, as a council, every single one of us individually have said, this is, we gotta do something, so. That that I'm glad you brought that up, I should have touched on it, but I I just wanna go back to our our council goals, we we as a collective made that clear, that was our number one.
Thank you, I appreciate those those additions, Councilmember Campos. Councilmember Serrano?
And and I know I sent over, I think, to both you gentlemen, I'm looking at Lincoln and Ferguson for the audience that can't see me from TV. Uh I believe it was either Kent or someone's ordinance, I'm sure you are well aware of that, but if we can also track. How successful that organization is, um maybe that's something more Chief Roski's department, um. You know, I think I have very little faith in our legislature, I'm gonna say that, the fact that they have to get called in a special session. For something of this nature that should not be political, it's an absolute health crisis, um so with that, I wanna make sure that we're proactive, and then again, to the extent that we can engage with other. Uh municipalities that have these types of laws on book, uh not just from learning how to cut and paste, but. Their implementation may be a different strategy, or they may have uh similar geographic or other physical presences of the downtown corridor. Let's figure out how we can, you know, mobilize and and utilize, because no one should experience that, especially, you know, kids, so, thank you.
Uh Councilmember Serrano, sorry to put you on the spot, um I didn't understand quite what Kent was doing, uh what what are they trying to address with that, is this homelessness, is this?
Um no, it's specific to uh like because basically it's a pre uh disposition of the Blake type enforcement, so they're actually. Uh seeking local control on Blake type issues.
Understood, thank you.
If I could just add that we we have been doing a lot of research on what other cities are doing and and what they're implementing, and. Um we can be prepared as as early as a couple of weeks to at least present an update to council on what what we're seeing out there, and. Um we'll we'll ask for some some stats to back that up as well.
Great, I appreciate that, alright, any other um anything else from council, if not, I will move on to the next item on our agenda. We have an executive session, there is none listed. I'm seeing 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 no interest in executive session, great, because I also do not have any interest in that, so. Um with no further items in front of us, I'll move to item eight, adjournment, uh it is eight twenty six, and this meeting is now adjourned, thank you all for coming.